I'm Nancy Pelosi.
I have a policy that's for the relations to...
Okay.
One shade shift.
Hit the second one down, somebody.
Sorry. I know the spotlight's on me. It's all good.
We say our purpose comes from...
And you don't want it all.
(sigh) Check. Can you press that down?
My first thought is meeting orders. And first, I'll see what my reasons is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic of the British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Some familiar faces. Okay, I'd like to first ask for these motions about tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moving on to the hearing of the public. And at this time, I'd like to just review. We have two minutes for our audience here, the public. And during this time, speakers shall clearly state their names and their address before proceeding with comments. They should limit their time to no more than two minutes and shall provide an opportunity to address the board. The board expects each speaker or speaker to be courteous and civil, modeling for our students somehow respectfully disagreeing with another view. Speakers will address the entire school board, not an individual board member, the superintendent, an individual staff member, nor the audience. Do not interrupt other speakers once your time has expired. The board will not, and shall not be asked to engage in a debate or discussion with the public. We appreciate everyone that's here tonight. I welcome you all. And I'd like to give whoever's willing to state their address.
Hi, my name is Thierry Ward. I live at 63 Erie Street in Ougio. I'm speaking on behalf of 32 families that I've had contact with in the past month. And we ask for your intervention following five key areas. We would like coming core out of our schools. It has done more harm than good, and there are a number of studies which confirm this, particularly by Harvard and CSAL, a federally funded study group. We particularly reject the way math is taught and the gradual erosion of social studies. We seek a return to traditional teaching methods in subject areas. And we ask that at some point, the board would show us a plan of how to maybe accomplish this. We do not want the Ougio-Appalachian School District teaching our children about sex or gender. We feel that these are areas that parents should be addressing with their children. We do not want any form of critical race theory taught in the Ougio-Appalachian School District, any variation of critical race theory. And we feel that critical race theory promotes racism, and we are against racism. We are grateful to the board and to the administration that at the end of the past school year, the district made provision for parents to allow their children to have a medical and emotional opt-out for the masks. And we thank you for that. And we hope that if masks are required through the state this year, that you would provide the same accommodation. We also ask that children in the district not be required to be vaccinated with the COVID vaccine in order to attend school in person. According to the CDC, as of July 26th of this year, 6,340 deaths have occurred as a result of these vaccinations in addition to the following adverse reactions: anaphylaxis, thrombosis, Guillain-Barre syndrome, myocarditis, and paracodytis. Myocarditis and paracodytis, which are swelling of the heart and surrounding tissues, have particularly affected young people aged 30 and under. As of July 21st, 2021, now COVID vaccine has received full approval by the FDA. We thank you, and we appreciate you for your time.
Thank you. So, anyone else who would like to address them?
I'd like to follow that up. Thank each other time to speak at this meeting. I am Jessica Johnson. Last year, I homeschooled my children due to the circumstances surrounding the current pandemic, or I have come to call it the current political situation. I chose to homeschool my children because I could not wrap my mind around the situation and the measures that were taking place. I was not going to put my children in a place where they blindly had to follow rules, like wearing a mask and sitting here or standing there. To me, it sounds like indoctrination. My children had questions in the first grade, so why? Questions like, do these mandates violate our civil rights? What we found was not really. But it is our civil right not to follow these mandates. Or you can choose to follow them. The problem with the schooling happened, children would have not been given a choice as to whether they would follow these mandates or not. They would be expected to follow in line with, like a good little soldier. So needless to say, last year was hard. We're thankful time, and homeschooling three children was hard. However, we survived. During all of this, I found the time to research. I found the time to educate myself and my boys in things like the Constitution. Our government is here to serve us. Our schools are set up to serve us. We, the people, you guys work for us. I wanted to bring you my concerns so that someday, my boys will be able to participate in a free public education. First, masking should be optional. If the vaccines are FDA-approved by September, they too should be optional. It is unfathomable to me that the clinical trials will not be over for two years, but the FDA is thinking of approving a vaccine after roughly six to seven months of data. We know some of the short-term side effects like death, anaphylaxis, spells, coughing, discarders, heart attacks, myocarditis, etc. What we don't know is what long-term effects will be. Will the myocarditis turn into long-term cardiac issues? Will people be unfurled? Will the ball be swept? Are there no longer targets? No one knows, because the studies are not complete. As I stand here today, and my kids are enrolled in a private school, where the mask will be optional and so will the vaccines, I think that you, our board, to take action and start writing letters and speaking out on behalf of your students, exercise our civil rights. It's not true that you have to follow the guidance from the Health Department. The Health Department guidance is just that. It's guidance. You have an obligation to speak on behalf of us, the parents of your student body. You also have an obligation to us to be forthcoming about what the requirements will be you will be putting in place. Parents need to know if they need to find alternative ways to educate their children. Are you going to stand up for these kids, or are you going to bow down to the political pressures? As for me, I will not submit. I will not comply. If that means homeschooling my children or finding a way to find a private education, I will. So last night, I spent some time reading the New York State Constitution. About that, we have a constitution. In New York State, that's a problem. I thought I would highlight a couple of points in just the education. The education section of our New York State Constitution is like 10 paragraphs. So I thought I'd highlight it for you. Number one, the legislature should, shall provide the maintenance and support of a system of free common schools wherein all children of the state may be educated. Nowhere in it does it say providing you fit any criteria. It says all the children of the state may be educated in a free public school. Number two. Sorry, my paper's unstable. But the legislator may provide for the transportation of children to and from any school or institution of learning. It says any school. So for parents like me that have been trying to figure out how to get my children to a private school and home, I would be conditioning the school to help me with transportation. I stand here before you in peaceful, noncompliant. I will continue to advocate for my children. I will continue to help parents like me that are no longer going to submit and comply with this political agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1189.25][1189.25](applause)
Hi, I'm Maria Hulston. I live at 1096 Chestnut Ridge Road. I attended the meeting in June, and that was much less formal than this one. So I didn't really prepare a statement or anything. There's just two things I wanted to address. In that meeting in June, I asked the board to please reach out to our local representatives because, like I said in June, your titles alone hold a little bit more weight than ours as individuals. And I was just wondering if you guys have done that. And two, I like that the school sends out surveys to the parents, often asking our opinion on things. I think it might be a good idea to maybe survey out of what parents plan to do if masks and vaccines or any draconian COVID measures are mandated by the state. If you get a lot of responses saying we plan to pull our children out of school, homeschool them, private-school them, that might be a powerful tool to use to go to representatives. Look, we did this survey with the parents, and it's looking like a huge number of kids are going to be disallowed from the public school system if these mandates go through. So, you know, I just thought that may be a good idea.
Thank you for bringing that up. And I think it would be important for you and the audience to know that the School Boards Association here in New York State represents us. And there's 700 districts in New York State. And so what we utilize is the School Boards Association here in the state to help us with these kinds of issues along with many others, but especially this. So if you're asking reaching out, that's what we've been utilizing.
Correct.
So you're saying you're reaching out to the School Board Association at directly to representatives, like go to the state?
What happens too is the School Board Association will share that information with the representatives.
Do you know that they do?
Pretty certain. I have a conversation with the representatives occasionally, or you can get to them.
That sounds like a gaslight.
The other thing is...
That sounds like a gaslight.
The other thing is, I attempt through, whether it's through Zoom meetings or in-person meetings, that we've had over the past six months, I've attended meetings with representatives, and discussions have come up about these same topics that you have brought to us today. And so it's not just through the School Boards Association. You can see the link. So there is discussion going on about representatives. But the School Boards Association is very powerful, and they represent us, and we're thankful that they represent us. Well, there's only seven blocks, and there's, like I said, 700 districts in this state. And so it's nice to have. And we've attended conferences as a board. All seven of us have been together at some of these conferences. And it's amazing when we get together and we have an opportunity to interact. Prior to COVID, we've been able to interact with members of boards throughout the state from Western New York, from Central New York, from the northern part of our state, and talk about issues. But especially, we've been able to even get emails on a regular basis from the School Boards Association, giving us input on a daily basis. We're inundated with emails and information internally that's going on as well as what we're getting from our superintendent. So, yeah.
Well, if you decide to do a survey, and you want to pass that along to other districts in the state, and see what their districts are saying about it as well, you could go to, as a group, to the state and say, this is what we're seeing from our parents, that they're going to pull their kids out if these mandates go into place. That, you know, there won't be a public school system if there's no kids to teach.
Thank you.
Teresa Gossard. I am here with this group. I'm also the Tyreke County Libertarian Party Chair. So we deal with a lot of rights and liberty. And to kind of circle back to you guys saying that you go to the School Boards Association. Well, one of the problems that we often have with this, since this is a political virus, it's more political than it is about wellness, because politicians are deciding our health choices and our business practices, is that heavier populated areas, like Hudson Valley, New York City, they get a stronger voice all the time. And I don't know if most of you are from Ougio or have lived here a long time, but our school district here and our people here, we're unique. And I think that the tax dollars that they pay into school funding should count just as much for their voice, but it doesn't if we're going to bend a knee every time a politician wants us to do something different with our kids. It's not fair. And people who are afraid for their kids to get sick, staff that's afraid, that's perfectly fine. Stay home, have an option for them. But we can't stop everybody. We can't. And it's not fair for the people who do want to live that they have to keep their kids home. And what you're going to end up with is people who want free babysitting. And everybody else is going to pull out their kids, and then where does the funding go? That's where does it go?
I also want to clarify, School Boards Association are... We're the association. In other words, us seven along with the other members of the board make up this huge body of individuals.
I almost ran for one year's [inaudible]. I'm left in time now.
But what I'm saying is that I'm not looking at my colleagues across in Buffalo or in Waverly or in Spencer or in Johnson City. They're board members, and they're from all different walks alike. They're, like I said, they're part of our association. So that when we get together as a group, we're discussing all different topics, including ones that are on the forefront right now.
I don't know how much weight they have. I personally feel like unions are more lobbyists than the School Board Associations. So I feel like a stronger outreach there is better because that's going to end up putting you guys in a situation. Because if these restrictions are put in place, I'm already encouraging everyone, start homeschooling your kids. You know what? We've got things like this critical race theory that we don't want our kids hating themselves because of a color, because of a theory. So it's getting to a point where maybe the schools need to make some of their own decisions instead of depending on the state. I know you get state funding, but there's got to be another option. Thank you.
State and federal funding. Anyone else?
My name is Brita Terry. I live at 269 Palm Road in Appalachian. Was that too fast? Got it. Brita, B-R-I-T-A.
Thank you.
Last name Terry. I have four boys. I chose to homeschool my oldest three last year, which was really hard. Their ages going into this fall will be pre-grade K through third. One of my almost third graders has a high level of academic and physical special needs. So that was a challenge in and of itself. I was super grateful for any of the OA teachers that gave me support through this past year. It was a tremendous blessing. But I know after a year, I can't do this long term. So two of my biggest concerns were the mask mandates and the early and staggering start times for the elementary kids. My husband is an electrician, so I'm the only one getting the kids ready in the morning. It was daunting to think he needs to try to get four of them ready by 7:30 into school, having to wake them all up by quarter after six. So wanting to know for this fall what the plan is so we as a family can make a plan, whether it's, I know, again, don't want it to be homeschool, but if that's my option, I'll make it work, private school or whatever. But I know that for my one son, who gets such great special education, and specifically AES, I would love to see him back in school this fall. But again, my biggest concerns are the mandating of masks and that really start time, and of course, the COVID vaccine. And I agree with a lot of ladies that have put the time into researching and preparing a statement, but I just wanted to share where my name is at. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just add. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate everybody's comments. So we are still in the holding dinner, as you're probably well aware. We were at the mercy of the governor's office to give us any clarification as to what this reopening in September is going to look like. I'm not sure if you saw his press conference today. It was as clear as mud. I can tell you that. He is, what appears to be that he would be giving some power to local authorities to make decisions in some of this. But in his words, he also later states that if the state has to step in... has to step in, that's what we're doing. So we're, again, as much as we're planning and preparing for next year, we are as frustrated as you are in terms of the information that we're getting. I know that all sorts of different advocacy groups, the Commissioner of Education are pressuring his office to give us some information as to what we're going to be dealing with. We have, you know, about a month's time to be ready to go, to figure out how we're going to transport kids to school, are we going to be under social distancing, all these stipulations that we dealt with last year, and what are we potentially going to be dealing with next year? I probably, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but at the very end of the year was probably the best part of the year for us. The summer has been great for us, we've had summer camps all summer long with hundreds of kids on campus at great success rates. So we are hopeful that there will be some local decisions that we can make. I will address this start time as well, so we don't know at this point if we're going to have to transport in and use the same schedule as last year and stagger those times in order to be able to get all the kids in. That is the set stone until we actually get this guidance from the governor on how many students we can put on a bus and what those stipulations are going to be from a health perspective. But ultimately, what we were looking to do after receiving all the feedback, received great feedback and our thought exchange, and recognized that 7:30 was a touch early, I think, in terms of start time, and we, you know, we were looking at, I think, from a pilot standpoint of piloting this next year and then collecting more data, just because it's hard to, hard to get a full analyzation of the data during a COVID year because everything is so different. And, you know, we would look to try to bump that start time to about eight o'clock and then end time about 2:30, and then what we would do is implement care programs, we'll offer kind of a combination of what we do in enrichment, where kids can do different things around STEM learning, they can get in some physical activity, you know, maybe some agriculture experiences, have time to homework help, and then just some free play time as well within that timeframe, some intramural programs that we can implement. And then our high school, we would pilot 9:00 AM to 3:30. One of the things we heard from the high school groups and listening to the feedback was flexibility for kids and their schedules, and some kids that do work, or kids that are involved in multiple things outside of school. And we think we have a good plan for that in terms of offering a zero period, where kids could have the option of taking their physical education in the zero period or maybe coming in and doing music lessons or things of that nature to create some flexibility in their day. Right now, a lot of them take on a lot and it becomes very challenging for them to get everything in, and the last thing they want them to do is to have to choose one thing over another. The other piece that we think we can do with that is by taking that zero period for some of the students that do that, and these would probably be our upper level juniors and seniors, potentially sophomores, and that one opens up a period for them during the day where they can take an additional college course that we offer for free, they could take an AP course, they could take a, you know, an elective that they might be interested in, in trying in terms of preparing them. So again, we're going to look to pilot this for next year, collect more data, see how it goes, and then we won't make a final decision on that until we get to the, let's get out of this COVID world and to the end of the school year. But to answer your question, I don't know what they're going to give us and when they're going to give it to us. We've been asking, they're asking and asking the governor's office to the point now where the Commissioner of Education can't get answers from the governor's office, and it's frustrating, to say the least, because we need a plan.
She wrote a letter saying masks and COVID restrictions.
That's, I'm referencing that, so the reality of it is, is we could get information tomorrow, we could get information in three weeks, it wouldn't surprise me one bit. But so you're aware, we're, we, I believe, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but we don't want to be in this any more than you do. And we're hopeful that we can carry on the way that we carried on towards the end of the school year and get back to as normal as possible, and for kids.
As soon as we know.
Yeah, as soon as we know, we'll know, I mean, we'll get the information out to you as soon as we can. We are going to send some information out tomorrow, but again, there'll be some caveats in there as far as, we're still waiting on official guidance from the state as far as moving forward, so there could be some potential changes, but here we are, August 2nd, waiting, waiting, waiting to try to get this information so we're not getting mixed messages, but unfortunately, we're going to have to get this out there and say, this is what we're doing so families can plan and prepare for the fall.
Elvah Lemon, 660 McValley, Apple Lincoln. I don't have a speech or anything, mostly agreeing with what everyone said. Just a couple of questions on the CRT issue, what policies, if any, does the district have in place to make sure that the kids are not being taught any of that in school? I did have an issue with one of my middle school class, kids' classes at the end of the year, and I addressed that with the principal, so I'm going to bring that up here. Actually, I sent an email out to all of you, so you probably have seen it. So, but for the future, what policies, if any, where would we be able to get a curriculum or syllabus for middle school classes? From what I understand, those are not available. They may be for the high school but not for middle school, so where do we get a program of what the kids are being taught in school for the middle school, any elementary school if that's possible, what curriculum do you follow? That's about it, I guess, and just wanted to thank you for last year, I think you're one of the few districts in the area who stayed open the most, I appreciate that. I was about to call the kids out for homeschooling, but after I talked to one of the teachers and she, you know, and I knew what the plan was and compared it to the other schools, I was like, alright, we'll go ahead with it for this one year, but I'm not willing to put up with that for another year, so hopefully from what everyone else said too, you know, that we can plan going forward, that we go back to as normal as possible. My mind's just not making sense. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up and answer your question, so we have, we have blueprints for each course that outline exactly what's going to be taught every 10 weeks for students. Oh, shit, or we're on the website posted, but we're under website construction at the moment, but we will make a note and make sure that those are accessible. In terms of the policy piece that you mentioned, again, it's been radio silence from the state of New York. There was an initial conversation all about, you know, the DEI, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion movement, which I would argue to say that we've been doing that for years here, and our focus has been on equity and inclusion in a big way, and that's just naturally what we do. In terms of the critical race theory, we don't have any information on that at the moment as far as what that even looks like from a state standpoint, and if they're going to require, they've backed off a ton of those conversations that I'm aware of at the moment. We do have a policy, an anti-discriminatory policy, that in general, really, at this moment, covers us in terms of those types of things, so. But we'll certainly address as new policies come about, or if we get more information, we'll certainly share that, but I think we're in a really good place in terms of what we're educating kids about and how we handle that, and.
I do have one question, so, you know, we elect the state officials to, you know, do their job or whatever, so it comes, when it comes out, I'm like, so you have no, in your, in our school district, we have no, like, singularity, like, we are not allowed to make our own choices about what's taught and what's not, or it's all top-down from the state?
Yeah, it's all state-controlled.
Top-down.
Currently is, yes.
So, right. It's the same right now? No.
Well, we're in, you're in a framework of the standards in terms of how you teach to the standards and some of the content that they're, and how you cover the standards as far as that goes, but there are set, pretty clear, set standards that come from the state that, you know, we're required to implement.
For funding or?
Just in general, I think it's just a requirement that we, as a school district, that, you know, we're defraught of anything different than.
From a state funding standpoint, how much stipulation on the federal level is a little different, but those choices are more localized.
We're about 50/50 right now in terms of state, federal funding and then tax funding as well, so.
If, what happens if you decide not to implement a mandate from the state or federal level?
Well, in some cases, in some cases, I'm held responsible under my certification as a superintendent of the state of New York, I could take my certification.
If we're so short of you, if you.
It might take anyways, I don't know. Yeah, no, but I understand what you're saying, so there's, there are some stipulations, I know that there's been some, some communications last year where there was some, you know, heavy-handed going on to places that, I don't want to say rocking the boat, but maybe not doing exactly what the state has required, and you hear these things, and I'm not sure whether the rumors are real or what, but that they're going to, you know, they can come in and take their funding and.
If they take your funding, are you, do you have the option not to follow the mandates then?
You would, probably.
How much of the funding that they give you is funding mandates that they're mandating on you? You know, positions, you know, curriculum, certain things?
I couldn't tell you that exactly, I mean, it's all kind of lumped in together, I can tell you that.
There is no delineation of the money.
Yeah.
They don't do that, they don't say, this million dollars is connected to this mandate. They don't do that.
Well, I just mean, like, if you didn't have to follow all the state mandates, how many millions of dollars could you save in money? I mean, with all the regulations and all the things that they make you do?
There's a lot.
How many millions of dollars would you save?
That would be.
I couldn't tell you that, probably the right time for it.
Figure that out, but, good question.
Good question. Give me a budget, I'll figure it out. Give me a budget, listen, please. I guess what you're hearing is that they're just all fed up with a whole bunch of mandates that really are not, they're not supported by us, that we're not voting on it, we're not asked about it, they're just coming down on the state. And the state wants us, that's the problem. Something like everybody wants local control.
Well, this has been an ongoing, quite honestly, just to be frank, been an ongoing issue for years.
Four and plus years.
Unfunded mandates. There's weekly emails that come on Friday night of some mandate that we're to implement on a Monday with no funding involved and no communication as to how we're going to do that, so this is, this is not uncommon practice for unfunded mandates.
Well, maybe it's kind of our school boards and our school board associations that you guys all trained about, started talking about helping anybody.
It's been an ongoing discussion for as long as I've been on the school board, I've been in education for 40-plus years, so it's been an ongoing discussion my whole career as a teacher.
It's getting to a point where the states are starting. It's, a large group of districts could all sit together and say, we're not going to follow this. You know, I mean, at what point can the state say, well, we're going to afford, I mean, what are they going to do to pull all the funding, well then, you know?
I appreciate everybody's feedback here, really, I do tonight, but I would really like to give other people an opportunity to talk about some of the things that have come to the table, so if there's anyone else that would like to share this evening with the board, I'd appreciate it, if you'd like to adjust the board, give some other people an opportunity. Is there anybody else?
I'll just, I have a question.
Yes.
So you have no specifics on the diversity, equity, you have no specifics on that, because there's a bunch of frameworks that are, you have no, nothing from.
No.
No information on that yet.
There was a large media push early on about this, but we have not received.
Well, it was on the website, that's where I got it, on the Department of Ed website, so it came out in April.
They did, they did a presentation at the, at the state level, I'm quite certain, so that's, I'm certain that's probably what that is, in terms of follow-up communication afterwards.
Well, if anybody read the framework of all that, it's totally unacceptable. I mean, our unions are totally taking over our kids' education, it's a socialistic thing and it has to be stopped. I mean, there's got to be some way that we can come together and have some say, we have to have some say on this, it's, it's taking over our schools, this is our children and our grandchildren, and we're, they're being bought, and it's unacceptable, and we have to come together and do something about it somehow, you've got to have some, some say or some, I don't know, they're just, you have to have something that makes a difference, because it's unacceptable what's being taught in our kids and not as whole class, it's just disgusting. We talk about, we, we pledge allegiance to the flag and it's embarrassing, it's totally embarrassing, we don't, we're teaching history, we're getting towards a big push of history that isn't even our history, the right history, I mean, this is getting over the top and ridiculous, and there's got to be some way that we can do something to work together to, I don't know what the answer is, it's just super frustrating, it's disgusting, and like I say, there's going to be a ton of parents that are taking their kids out of school, and there's already people joining and coming up with homeschool, you know, groups that are ready to do it, and it's going to happen. I'm sorry, I'm Hannah Miller, probably three homes row.
I know you were here before, thank you, I appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure I got it down, thank you very much.
So this is just something so big that we're fighting, it's way beyond anything that we probably have any control over, and it's just disgusting that money is winning over our children and our schools, and it's disgusting. It's total, you know, it's a total takeover of indoctrination into our schools and it's disgusting.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's feedback tonight, again, is there anyone else that would like to share with the board? Well, our students' intentions is at our heart, we're working very hard, all of us are, our staff, and we appreciate everybody's feedback, and certainly we'll do what we can as a board, as a team here in the district, and you as a community, just going forward because really, that's why we're here. So thank you again for everybody's comments, and we'll go forward in there, in the long of the night's agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting held on July 12th. So, can I be thinking?
Second.
All in favor? Moving on to our consent agenda for personnel. I need a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Jason.
Hi.
Any questions? You know, you've got a chance, so, do you do it? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our non-personal consent agenda, everybody's had a chance to look at those, budget transfers, treasury report, controllers, budget. Our tax, we need to do those separate, the tax warrant?
No, you see all the signs, you don't want them.
Okay, tax warrant, library warrant, hopefully we can use my glasses, and purchases, school buses. I need a motion? So move. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the presence report. I have none. Mr. Civic is on vacation with his family.
I just have one quick thing, I pretty much already, I guess I addressed this before, regarding the pilot schedule change, again, we appreciate all the feedback that we received of 795 different thoughts, I believe that it was, and it's helpful for us to make adjustments or changes to things, you know, when we share these things out, so we're appreciative of that feedback and the thoughts, so we're going to, we're going to look to move forward with that, all things hopeful, I guess. with that. All things hopeful, I guess, in terms of what we hear from the state. But that is, that will be our plan. And again, we'll pilot this and continue to collect some, some more data as the year goes on and not make a final decision on complete schedule changes until, until the end of next school year. So, any questions from the board? I think one of the other pieces that had come up that I left out was on the secondary level, with some concern with athletics. And I think I addressed that with the zero period and the start times for games. Well, the stack leagues have moved all the game times to 5:30 now. So there really is no issue with kids having the leagues who are early for away games or home games, whoever it might be. So we've, we've got that handled within there as well.
And is that figuring out? The zero period could be used as a gym class?
Yeah, the zero period could be a physical education class. You know, could be a, potentially could be a college strength and training course that kids can get college credit for. So really, it really does have some opportunity for us to build some flexibility in there for, for those students who aim to do a little extra, that want to do a little extra, maybe take an extra course or be involved in, in something else within the school. So also helps us a little bit with internships, placing students within the community for work-based internships. We employ a lot of students here on campus for us as well. So allow some flexibility in, in schedules where a student might be able to work for an hour during the day for food service or maintenance or, or for IT or tech department. So there's some, there's some great potential there that we're going to kind of watch and see as we go.
So that zero period, I'm assuming Patton has ideas of, you know, kids for different, do you ask like 20 kids come in and three of those boys?
Yeah.
I'm assuming.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll, they'll build a full program that'll cover all that. Yeah. So that's all. Really, I appreciate all the feedback from everybody. This is, it's helpful for us. And again, we certainly understand your, your thoughts and your feelings and frustrations.
Okay. Moving on to our second public comments. This is really limited to the business that we, the meeting we had tonight. So it's current, on the current stuff that we just discussed. So is there anyone that would like to address the board related to the business we just went over?
Yeah. You had mentioned several times about the school board association. I believe that's what you called it, where the 700 districts, the school boards get together as a group. That's not, that, that was, that was earlier, right?
Correct. That's not currently what we just went over with, what we approved. Yeah. Excuse me. If you need more explanation on, on that, please just drop me an email, okay? And I can explain it to Terry a little bit better, okay?
Yeah, it was just, it was just a question about the, about where they were going with it. Okay, okay.
I have a question about the, the schedule. You said zero period, that would be for secondary, the secondary kids before their start time at nine o'clock, right?
Yes.
And would they be providing their own transportation?
They would have to provide their own transportation for that.
That's it. So I'm going to save this. I know it's not this essential, but I did want to say thank you for listening to us. And I think it's written in stone. What's going to happen if you guys do decide to, to not follow the COVID restrictions? You have a lot of support and you can have it more. And thank you for listening to all of us. And so for the pre-K through fifth, you're thinking eight to 2:30, changing that slightly?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to clarify, so the eight and the nine, that's for next year, you said, not for this year?
So it would be this coming school year would be, we'll pilot those times.
Okay.
I, I didn't want to confuse before, but if we had to go back to last year's schedule based on some guidelines or laws or stipulations as far as that goes, then we may have to revert and do three again, which we hope that we don't have to do that, that we would just do the two runs and stick to a eight o'clock elementary and then a nine o'clock high school.
And then will there be busing for athletics?
Mm-hmm.
There would.
Yep. We're actually, we'll have busing also for kids that are in the after-school childcare program. So we can bus them to be home by six o'clock. And then those that want to pick their kids up would have until six o'clock to pick them up.
Anybody else? Thank you. Moving on to district business.
Come on, Marcy, you have to stop.
I can delete that. That's where it came from. I'm like looking. Copy paste. Sorry.
I was going to say. Just about, about three. Thank you very much.
I have no report to give to the board of education.
Bob, how was your vacation?
It was great. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much. I hope you're enjoying your vacation. You too. There we go. See, here, lay off. All right. But nothing else, then? I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sacred in.